Good evening, everybody. We're here at the Shelburne Community School Board meeting. And we convene the meeting.
What time? I can't even see them.
Five thirty.
Five thirty-four.
Five thirty-four. Thank you. There's glare there. And I am opening nominations for Chair of the Shelburne Community Board.
I'd like to nominate Dave Connery.
Second.
First. Discussion?
I think he'd be great.
You're gonna have hot food?
I can't promise that.
Move to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, take over.
Okay.
Thank you, Patty.
The next thing we need to do is appoint Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Russ Caffrey.
So moved. Or second? Second.
Someone has to first. Someone has to second.
Oh, okay. This is, is that a first? No, first.
That's a nomination.
All a first. Thank you. I'll first. That nomination.
Thank you.
There we go. Discussion? I spoke with Russ and he's happy about doing this. So it would be a good transition. It would be helpful for me. So it would be good.
Good. Excellent.
Wonder what, um, Alan.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Done. Okay.
So easy.
All right. So the next is election of clerk. So we hear a motion to nominate a clerk. You can't nominate. I nominate Tim for clerk.
Second or first?
Second.
Discussion? Are you gonna pay for the hot food?
I'm not the treasurer of the clerk.
Oh.
Get it straight right now.
All right. I move to, did I move to vote or?
All in favor?
All in favor. Tim Williams for clerk.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ayes have it. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
There we go. We do, for committees, we need to vote, but we just need to.
Treasure?
Ah, that's correct.
And treasurer.
Oh, we do have a treasurer?
Don't you? Or is it just the clerk who takes care of it? Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
The CSSU Board Rec. There are three. And I am choosing to stand down and I'd like to nominate Dave Connery to serve as the representative.
I would first that.
Second.
All right. Discussion? Totally okay with this? Talked about it with Russ, so.
Good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We need to appoint three to the CSSU Board. Nominate Kathy Stockman as our second.
First.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Are you opposed?
Not at all. Pleased to do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. And I nominate.
In absentia.
In absentia, I nominate Russ as our third member of the CSSU Board.
First that.
Second.
There we go. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Russ Caffrey is our third CSSU Board member.
Very good.
Okay.
So number official.
Number official. So we have a few adjustments to the agenda. For eight point five, we're gonna talk about the calendar. And is that?
It's in particular snow day.
In particular, snow days for the thirteen fourteen year.
Yes.
Okay. And eight point six is approval of the asbestos contract. Is that true? Is that what it is? Okay.
Based on the recommendation.
Well, okay. All right. So as Russ would always say, I don't see anyone in the audience, so we will move to six because we do, we did not have a presentation this week because we knew we had a lot of business to perform. So on reports to the board, we'll now hear from Patty on the principal's report, I assume?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
So I think I may have erred on the side of trying to be very fiscal and frugal and I did not make copies of the principal's report. I know, I, I just realized that sometimes those are handed out, so I apologize. I think you do have them actually sent to you electronically.
Yeah.
But I did not make copies, so. I'm just gonna highlight a few of the things that we've been doing for the last month. And some of these might be a little bit before just because of the way the flow of the months were and whether or not we had a PTO meeting, so, I mean, a school board meeting, excuse me. We just did this at the PTO last month, last week, so. Our spelling bee went very well. Thomas Daley was our champion of our spelling bee. And Thomas, actually, I think it was today, it was either today or yesterday, he represented Shelburne Community School in the statewide bee that was held at St. Michael's College. And to tell you the truth, I was so busy today, I could not figure out how things went. So I apologize for that, but we'll send you an email and let you, let you know how it went. But it was attended by many students and we actually had one third grader who decided to partake in spelling bee and did very well. He didn't think he did so well, but he did a really good job, so. If you had an opportunity to see our wonderful fiddle, fiddler on the roof cast as they performed at the town hall, I think it was about two or three weeks ago now. It was a wonderful performance. We did something a little bit different this time. We brought third, fourth, and fifth graders over so that they could watch the play during the day, during the school day, and they really enjoyed it. So we're hoping to do that again next year when Kristen Bamberger, who is the drama coach, does another play for us. So that was awesome. Read Across America is something we celebrate the first week of March and celebrate the birthday of Dr. Seuss. Everyone had a fabulous time. And we always wanna thank the committee who does that because it's a lot of work and, let me tell you, it's a challenging group to be with. So Nancy Nackley, Jen Niles, Shannon Baird, and Natalie Watson did a wonderful job organizing that for us. We also had Natalie Watson brought in a really interesting speaker. His name is Sam Drazen and you may have seen or heard of the book Wonder. And the book is actually by R.J. Palissio. I'm not sure how you pronounce his name, but it is the Vermont Reads Book of the Year. And so a number of the, our grades have read that book as part of their instruction. So Natalie decided that she knew this individual and brought him in. He has a facial cranial disorder like the character in Wonder. And he shared with students just a lot of good information about resiliency and what it's like to be different growing up, particularly in a middle school and a high school. And it was just a really powerful speech and the kids walked away with just all sorts of questions and, and just a lot of, a lot of wonderings about, about what that's like. So it was really great. We also had our arts and citizenship galley walk, which this would have been our second one. So that's a trimester. This was the second trimester. And it's our sixth through eighth grade students as they display their work in jewelry, wood carving, pottery, et cetera, from the craft school. And then the projects that they do in music and when they go to the arbors and Shelburne Neus and some of the off-site locations. And I don't need to go through professional development necessarily. Our in-service was fabulous, though. Molly did an awesome job. It was the last of our series this year and it is focusing still on Common Core. And we had a suicide prevention training. And I did wanna just highlight that as of March 2014, we did have 768 students enrolled at Shelburne Community Schools. So we don't seem to be dropping our numbers. And our fall kindergarten number is, as of today, was seventy-eight. So.
Patty, I just want to note that you may wanna change this graph. It says.
Oh, yes.
Two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you.
On the numbers.
Thank you very much, Kathy. We've done that a number of times now. We have to change that, so. Anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Brett.
You're welcome.
Next thing, oops. The CSSU one on top. Is facilities committee.
Right.
That's Kathy.
We, Tim and I, and Alan, and Patty, and Dave Kelly had a kickoff meeting with the Doran Whittier firm, Lee Dor and Rob Fitzgerald. Essentially, I would say that they were scoping out what they needed to know in order to present us with a proposal for the project. That would be for facilities to take us up to a bond vote. And it was a very productive meeting. And as a matter of fact, we have something tonight that is, as a result of that, their proposal that we hope we're gonna be able to vote on tonight. I think that it can be a very nice relationship with these folks. Oh, and as a result, we also decided to expand our committee and add a, one or maybe two community members to it also. And so Tim and I have been working on that, bringing in a committee members. Sure. Do we need to do that now? Do we do, do you need to know about what the proposal is now or will that be when we go to the action matters? I think maybe we'll do that at the action matters, but thank you for reminding me. Yeah. Okay. That's eight something.
Eight-three.
Thank you. Yep, eight-three.
That's it?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Unless you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
So we move on to seven point oh, discussion matters. And seven point one is playground, which was very funny. Last night I opened up the document to read it as you were editing it, editing it. And it was weird because all of a sudden this orange cursor appeared and then words started disappearing and being added. And then, and then I was like, I feel like I'm spying, so I closed the document and went away.
Hopefully I didn't spell anything wrong.
It was one of those things where you were trying to get it to, it was, it kept crossing out what you were writing and you wanted it to, this is what I want. I don't want you to cross it out, so.
Yes, I did make a revision, so I sent this to you. Yes. Hopefully got a, got a copy of it in time for the last scheduled board meeting and this being a week later, I, we did get an estimate, so I just wanted to kind of bring that, that to your attention. So is, I just go ahead and review this now, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So as you can see, I just talked about the status up there and I did cross out the fact that it was pressure treated wood because apparently it wasn't pressure treated, so. But the three playgrounds that we have and the status of the playground, the kindergarten playground that we call by the journey team wing, and it's the early ed one for kindergarten students and early ed students, so there's no plans next year to do anything with that particular playground. We also have a playground we call the school street playground, just because it's over by school street. After an inspection that was done on both that playground and the snelling playground, it was determined that that playground has to come down and it's mostly due to the condition of the wood. So the plans are to demolish that particular playground and we do not have plans to replace that playground. The snelling playground, which is the large playground that's between the fields and the building that's used, it's the one that's used the most, as I said, has also been inspected and there were a number of compliance issues that we were not in compliance with. So we would like to make a recommendation to take that down and then build a new playground. So what I did was I just kinda highlighted there for you some possible stages, but basically if you, excuse me, go down to the cost estimates, we have the site prep work. That would include the civil engineering, the prep work itself, and then the drainage. So what happened was I have some figures here and as you can look at my graph on the next page, there's some higher figure, or chart, excuse me, there's some higher figures and lower figures there and I've done a cost estimate out on a low side and a high side. And we had only just gotten what's in blue there. We had only just gotten that information a couple of days ago, so that's why I put that more updated information in there. You can see there's a significant difference between a low estimate of approximately fifteen thousand and a high estimate of approximately thirty-eight thousand, so significant difference on the site.
Do you know who those bids are from?
I do. It's called civil engineering. There's a company called Civil Engineering?
Yeah, Civil Engineering Associates, but what's the, how about the fourteen thousand
I thought David put the name down here, but I'm not. David Marshall. David Marshall works for, he works for Civil Engineering. It must, yep, that's right. David Marshall is Civil Engineering. That's the thirty-eight, thirty-seven-five. And, well, he did a lovely job showing me the little grid, but I'm sorry, he does not, they don't, there is no name here. I apologize, I don't. I'll have to find that out for you, Tim. I do not know who that company is. I thought it was in here somewhere, but I don't see it. So then moving on. We had two playgrounds? No, that's the playground. So Vermont, this, this company, Alti Play Parks and Playgrounds is the company who gave us bid, bid information regarding the actual play structure. So those play structure amounts are there. And what we did was we looked at some catalogs and basically these are the actual items that are on the playground. And it's really fairly difficult to make a determination because the, it can range from, you know, having a few pieces to having a whole lot of pieces. And you can pay, it's like anything else, that you're gonna pay X amount of dollars for the number of pieces that you wish. So what I did was I pulled out three different options. So the first option would be a relative, pretty similar to what we have right now, with a section of swings and with a section of like a major play structure. But it doesn't have what they call a central play web. The central play web is something that kind of holds different parts together so that children actually always are, it, it kinda literally holds all the pieces together and then the pieces kinda come off of the central play area, so it's really like a one-piece structure. And with the exception of the swings, it would just be that, it literally is like a web that attaches everything. And then the third option had, if you wanted something that was in the same ballpark, but we wanted to start to build a section that would be more specific for kindergarten students, they actually call that section an early section, two to five-year-olds. That's where I had the figure that's approximately twenty-five thousand. And then I just picked some limited number of structures that would be appropriate for students who were six to twelve years of age. And that's where that figure came from. And as I, as I said, it can't, that can, that's a variable that can be really anything that, you know, if we raised more funds from donations, that kind of thing, that's where that variable would come into play. Then there's labor. And labor can really be significantly different, as you see from those figures, the five to the nineteen, depending upon whether or not volunteers do the work. The way these companies work, and the two companies that we looked at worked this way, is that you, if you say that you wanna do your own labor, you pay that fee of five thousand and what they do is they bring two or three people onsite and basically kinda mastermind, you know, what's going on to make sure that you're putting the pieces together correctly, that kind of thing, and support you, but they don't actually do the physical work and then you get a work crew to come do the work for you. So you can see where that would be a significant savings. So then on the second page there is the, as I said, the best I could do with a low estimate and a high estimate. And then I did have a recommendation, so. Does anybody have any questions about this? I've got a timeline there for you that can be altered if necessary, but.
I mean, are you looking for action on this tonight?
No.
I think we have to have action the next board meeting, from what I understand.
Cause I mean, just, you know, my looking at this, I mean, I think it's, in terms of pricing and what it is, I mean, I think it's very incomplete. I mean, there's no plans, there's no, you know, we've got a range in the engineering of, you know, fourteen to thirty-six thousand dollars. I mean, I would, and it looks like we only have costs from one, one company. I mean, having not purchased a playground before, I would think that they would come in and give you a CAD drawing or something and.
So I have, I have those.
Make, make a recommendation of what fits in our area and things like that.
So I might have been, I might have been, it's from two companies. I put some information together from two. And I do have some CAD drawings that certainly we can look at, but my assumption, so I could be wrong here and please, I may have heard incorrectly, but I thought we were gonna put a committee together to do that, so that's why I didn't wanna be preemptive because if I just kinda showed the plans, then I, I guess I would feel like the, I wouldn't know what the committee, what the charge of the committee would be.
So you're saying the committee's then gonna go through and do that?
That's what I thought.
And then you're gonna come back with a recommendation?
Yeah.
This is what we want and how much it's gonna cost?
But unfortunately, I think it's kind of a chicken and egg situation, from what I understand, because we need to know, can we, will you release funding of X number of dollars for us to go ahead with the project? You know, what kind of monies would you release for that project? And then we would go to the committee and say, well, we have this guarantee as far as school monies. And then does the committee wanna raise more money if they wanted an upscaled playground? What kind of design? Because what I had heard was that we wanted some student input into the design, that the PTO would like some input into the design. That's what I was thinking. But I'm more than happy if you would like to, to go in any direction that you'd like.
Well, I mean, my personal opinion is, you know, we had talked about fundraising prior and, you know, and then we had talked about using some of our under budget.
Right.
This year, which I had thought we had talked about, we had maybe a hundred thousand or something.
Yeah.
Around.
Yep.
And I don't know if that's still real.
Yes, it is.
But I don't, you know, I think personally, going back to the voters and then asking them, or going to fundraise is, maybe sends the wrong message. I mean, I think the voters have been very supportive of the schools. They've approved our budget for however many years. And then to go back and nickel and dime them to get another twenty or thirty thousand dollars, I just, at least from my perspective, it doesn't sit right with me. Cause I think we have the money. I think we could do it.
Yep. And I, I mean, we've gone through all the dollar figures and certainly, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is what I would recommend and I can, we've gone through the budget and we have it. So we can certainly use that money. I just, the reason this is not specked out a hundred percent, as I said, is because I, that's, my thought was that if a committee is going to actually sit at a table and help to design something, I, I, I just felt it was disingenuous to just say.
That was my understanding also. I was actually, I was, I was surprised and pleased to see that you had been proactive and had presented this information to us now because to this point, we haven't had any information, concrete information like this about playgrounds and what it could cost and what it could take and what the timelines are and that sort of thing. So thank you very much for putting that together and, and presenting that to us. But it was my understanding that, that the PTO and perhaps the board or whatever would then take the ball and run with it and it would be a project that would be under our wing as well for this.
I mean, I would think that the committee would come up with what they feel comfortable working with the different vendors in terms of the plan.
Correct.
And then according to Bob, it has to go out to bid anyway.
Correct.
And then we would send it out for a sealed bid.
Yep.
And, you know.
I think it's similar to what we're doing with the facilities committee, that, the same kind of a, a structure and.
Exactly.
That sort of thing.
Yep. That's what I thought, too.
And then by, I don't know if by next meeting, then you would come back and say, okay, this is what we came up with, that we have three bids.
I, I can certainly do that if you would like me to task that committee quickly. Yep.
Cause we're gonna have to do that.
Yeah, it's gotta be quick.
Pretty fast. Because he said, he has a date right here, so if we order on the twelfth of May, we'll have everything stationed, ready for July first.
Correct.
Which is a good idea. So in the next three weeks, cause we're a week late.
Yeah.
You know, we would have to, so we'd have to go out to the community, ask people to participate. And, I know you mentioned some folks that might wanna, Rad might wanna be part of it.
Yeah. I have some PTO members as well.
Exactly.
Yep.
So what I, I had written a board corner article. And if we don't wanna make fundraising a big deal about this playground, do we, do we not wanna?
I mean, that's just my opinion.
I don't feel strongly about that. I, I don't.
Well, I think the PTO's gonna give six thousand dollars.
They are.
It is.
That's correct.
And as Tim said, I think that the community has given a lot. I, I think going back to the well is, you know, I think we're pushing our luck.
Okay.
And I think we've got this, we've got funds. Think it ought to come out of the, the school funds.
And I think, too, that partly this broad overview that Patty's provided lets you know you, you really can, you have some options with that amount of money. You can probably, the committee then is tasked to hold that amount in their heads.
Right.
And think about what works and come back with what's workable, so.
And then as, as far as the labor goes, I have personally worked on putting together a playground for a school and it was not difficult and it was enjoyable.
Kind of fun, yeah.
It was almost like a potluck picnic type of thing on a gorgeous day and everybody working together all day long and even the kids participating and it, you know, it gives buy-in also on the project.
I've done one as well and it was.
And I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only, like, the engineer in me thinks like, so if we do commandeer the community for all this labor, when you've done this, like, who goes around and makes sure all the bolts are?
Well, they said that, that they have a team, a supervisory team.
They have to do it. They have to do that when we're all done to ensure, because you have to have, before you can use the playground, you have to have it inspected by the state of Vermont. And so they ensure that it's inspectable, if that's a word, you know.
And I think I heard you say that they have a team onsite.
Correct.
During the volunteer time.
Yeah, they stay that whole time.
So that they, they're supervising.
That would all be spelled out in the request for proposal.
That's correct.
I would imagine, yeah.
And you would, you'd made that determination as to whether you wanted to do a, you know, a kind of home labor piece or have them do the labor, cause they can also do the labor for us.
I mean, I think within the RFP, we would ask them to give us two prices. Delivered and installed or delivered and supervised and we would provide labor.
Absolutely.
So in one conversation, I, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I just had some questions, but.
Oh, in one conversation I had with Allegra about the Heinsberg playground, she said there was, they received some money from the state of Vermont. Are you familiar with any grants to the education department?
They, there used to be actually, when I had done one at Rallin Town, we got money through a playground fund. There was an actual playground. It was natural resources.
Okay.
That had some money set aside. And I'm not sure if it was the, for the drainage, I, I would have to think back on it, but it could have been for the drainage part versus, you know, the actual equipment part, but certainly we got some monies for it. It was fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
I don't know what those monies look like anymore. Do you know when Heinsberg was built?
That was a couple of years ago.
I don't know.
I could ask Joan Lenis.
I think.
She'll be here tonight.
I know that unfortunately the state, many of those types of grants have not materialized of late, but I'm not saying that they, it might not be there. I'm happy to look into that.
So, well, I'm, I was gonna ask like Kate Webb or Joan Lenis as well, so if you could ask Joan, that would be great.
I'll ask her tonight, yeah.
That'd be great.
Joan did the.
Excellent, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Joan Lenis was one of the primary movers for the fundraising for the Snelling playground, her briefly.
Oh, yes, that's right.
And that's, she was talking to Rad about that and that's what he thought, well, if you were gonna do fundraising also, I mean, he could help with that on her advice for that.
Patty, do you think there's gonna be, um, people are gonna be upset if there's no school street playground? I mean, how's that gonna affect the teachers on that side?
Um, last year. Last, that's a great question, last year we actually didn't have anybody use it for about six months because of some structural issues that we had. And there was one class who was definitely, um, you know, had to make some changes due to that. With the exception of that one class, everybody else on that side does use the, um, we call it kindergarten playground that's of my journey. Because it's really easier to use the other playground also if it is a lunch recess situation, because obviously they're, that playground's closer to the cafeteria. So that was the thought behind putting something in to that playground, the Snelling playground, um, because they're over there anyway. So as it is right now, you know, they walk from one end, they go to lunch, then they have to walk back to that area and they, they actually reduce their quote-unquote recess time. I mean, they're walking outdoors, so of course they're getting some exercise, but that was one of the thoughts.
So you don't see it as an issue then?
I do not.
Okay.
And I think, you know, being in that neighborhood, I think once your kids get to a certain size, they'll wanna go to the big playground.
Especially the big new one.
That big new one, yeah.
Exactly.
There you go.
Big new one with the flags and the bells.
Exactly.
Only gonna be one to go to.
Yeah, and then there's also gonna be stuff across the street in Davis Park provided by the town, so that'll be, that'll be new as well, so.
Does the school use that or will the school use that?
I guess we're not gonna encourage people to use it, we're not gonna, yeah, the cross the street thing.
We're not encouraging it, but.
What's their construction timeline, are they, this spring?
They're doing a little bit of stuff this spring, and they have a multi-year sort of phased in. So they're, they're putting some ramps in and some elevated features and they're arranging some boards and rocks so that they face that new pavilion.
Oh, cool.
That's been put in by the, by the Boy Scouts, so. And that's, all those facts need to be verified, but that was, that was a general story that I heard, so. So, um, so I have a board corner that we can go out and ask, I'll have you guys review it. And we can ask folks in the community if they wanna be part of this quick committee.
Great, yep. Um, and it would be quick, you know, commitment would be six weeks probably.
Is it going in next week?
Well, I mean, we'd have, yeah, we'll put it in, it'll be in, well, it'll be in a week from tomorrow, hopefully.
A week from tomorrow, yeah, okay.
So, uh, and then.
Monday afternoon is the deadline, Monday noon is the deadline.
Right.
Do you wanna include a date for the first meeting so people kinda know I can do this or I can't do this?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Might be a thought.
That's a good idea.
It's gonna have to be the following week, right, I mean, you're gonna have two weeks.
You have to move.
Right.
So we're talking about, it, it would go in on the twenty-seventh, so we're talking about a, a meeting on the week of April first.
I think that's probably doable.
That's okay.
I think so.
We, we may find that there's a limitation on the, the suppliers who can give proposals because that's high season for installation.
Yep, yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Well, and if worse comes to worse, can we just, we could also meet for a few minutes and approve something if it's after April. If we get a quote and we can read the quotation, cause when's our next meeting, our next meeting is April sixteenth or April ninth?
No, I think it's the ninth, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so we might have to meet quickly another time to discuss it and approve it.
What did David say, he needs to order it by when?
Five twelve, so.
That was actually me, because what I was saying, I think, if you're looking at the bottom here, so what I did was I just backed it up as far as time-wise. Because they said in the, in their catalogs, basically a six to eight week, and I gave it nine weeks. So we could do it a little bit later, I would think.
Yeah.
Um, just because you'd want it, I think, as close to July first as possible.
Yeah.
It's, it's a challenge because you're ta, you're, you know, taking down a playground, you have to wait until school's out to take it down. And then, of course, you have to do site work before you can put the playground up. And we have a really robust, um, summer program that uses the playground all the time, so, um, you know, it's, it's gonna be a bit of a challenge, but.
Did they give you a window of how long it ta, I mean, once it's here, I mean, do they put it up in a day, I mean, is it a one-day miracle and it's done?
Um, the playground project I worked on was, maybe, it was a weekend, it was only a weekend.
Yeah, it was ours was a weekend.
Um, I, I think we all got there pretty early in the morning on Saturday. And I wanna say by Sunday afternoon, it was a pretty skeletal crowd, um, putting the finishing touches on it. I think it was another week or so before we could actually use it, I remember putting that construction, you know, tape around until the inspector came, but, um.
But swings and climbing structures and slides and.
It's amazing how fast it, it go, it really does go up fast.
So realistically.
I think it's really the ground stuff that's more, you know, gonna take more time.
So it's probably a couple of weeks then you're gonna be without a playground, right, I mean, by the time you take the other one out, do the prep and then get it up and get it inspected?
Yeah, it sounds to me, because they're doing things called, and now I'm really going out of my league, but, you know, perimeter curtain drains, connector lines, solid connectors.
And that's depending upon good weather.
The site prep, um, internal drains.
Right, installation.
Installation.
You know, things that I, I don't really understand how long those take, but.
And it's all dependent on whether.
And weather permitted, yeah.
Is it still gonna be like a wood chip based?
Yes, yeah.
Base there, okay.
I don't, I don't think it's actually wood anymore, I think it's a, some kind of other product.
It's ground up rubber, is it?
Yeah, I think it's rubber.
Oh, they're gonna do that.
Can we, uh, build into the, uh, request for proposal that the, all the remediation of the school street playground removal would, would be taken care of by this, uh? Did it make sense to include that or was Dave gonna just take care of it?
Dave was gonna do that separate, I can certainly ask for that if you.
So there's no remediation cost that, you know, requires expertise or anything?
We, we have some money in the budget that would have been to, um, repairs and maintenance and repairs. And it would have been to kind of do regular maintenance and repairs on those two playgrounds, and we can use that instead to demolish the school street one.
And all the metal is recyclable, so that's all the slides and all the connectors.
Correct, yep, that's all recyclable and.
And then it's just about wood.
I think that they just talked about bringing in an excavator and just like pulling all the stuff out.
Can, can any of that stuff be used in the new playground?
No. No.
I, I asked that.
Okay.
There is a piece there, a couple of metal, you know, if you wanted to try to sell it, I guess you could, but I would just use it as scrap and get some money.
Get some money for it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, we'll, we'll review the board corner, we'll have a meeting for first, April first, second or third, based on whether or not. Can you check the school calendar and find out if there's anything that night?
I sure can.
On either one of those days?
So do you want me to get back to you in like a day or so, Dave, and just let you know, so either four, one, two or three looks good?
That's a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, right?
Yeah.
One, one final thing, on the, on the site prep or the ultimate plan, does it make sense to have it done in a modular system? So that if down the road and a year from now, we choose to add the kindergarten or the, you know, the, the little kids playground? That that's all built into the project so that, or, or, you know, an allowance or accommodation has been.
That's, actually, we're going to do the footprint.
Yeah.
To accommodate that.
Okay.
So all the site work will be done to accommodate a, you know, what I would call a kindergarten section, for lack of a better term. The, the, when we were talking about fundraising, I think that's where we kinda get into whether or not we would put anything in that part of the footprint or whether that would be for the future.
Right.
But again, I, you know, depending upon what the committee thought for structures, I mean, they might think it's more important to put some things in the kindergarten section, you know, I don't know, so that's why.
Maybe that's part of the RFP is show it to us with kindergarten-sized equipment over here and without.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Is there gonna be a board rep on this committee or two?
I was hoping Dave was gonna step in.
I think I know one person who might be on it. That'll be me.
Cause he wears the PTO hat too, so he would be very valuable, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right.
Well, thank you.
I'll circulate that thing so you guys can.
And then do we need to put that down for the agenda for next time?
Patty, there's a spider right there.
Oh, look at that.
Excuse me for interrupting, but no worries.
Good eye.
Well.
Where should I put him? Somewhere where it doesn't fall in your lap, probably.
Good thing this isn't.
Get out of view of the camera.
Good thing this isn't an executive session, so.
Exactly, he's gonna fall off.
She's gonna put him out in the hall.
She's just gonna have to stop him.
All right.
So I'll make a note that you need in the next agenda, are you planning you'd have an action matter at that point about the project, who the first, the company is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And if we don't have all the information, we'll defer it, but we'll shoot for that.
Okay. Yep.
So the only part that I'm wondering is, so if I set around a hundred thousand dollars to a committee, that would be, that's okay, correct?
There's another six from the PTO.
Yes, there could be, uh-huh, there's actually a five thousand dollar commitment from the PTO and there's a thousand dollar donation that somebody made.
Lovely, nice.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, seven point two is board corners. I do have one ready on the playground, which I'll edit to remove the request for fundraising.
We'll see what happens.
I mean, part of it, I mean, all it said was like, you know, if you wanna participate, you can help defray costs and donate money tax-free. I don't know. Uh, does anybody have anything else urgent they wanna discuss at the board corners or? I think there's not an awful lot of time, we could discuss the K to twelve reorganization.
Do, do we introduce the new board members often in the next boards corner? Maybe just a, a paragraph at the beginning of that or will that dilute that?
No, I think that's a good idea.
You know, the new, the US chair, um, Russ's vice chair, Tim is clerk.
Could do that. Yeah.
Or maybe at the, at the end of it, whatever. Okay, I think we all could do that.
I was gonna put a little thank you for voting, sixty-five to thirty-five.
Absolutely. Absolutely, that's right, that was an unbelievable vote.
So, okay, can do that. But anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, so we move on to action matters, eight point one, which is the regional calendar. Does, does anybody wanna make a calendar two point O joke?
Oh, ooh, ouch.
Don't think so.
That is completely off the table now, right? It is.
Or under the radar maybe, and under the table.
Cause, because it was, you know, Elaine said one thing at that last meeting, that it was gonna be delayed a year. And then I thought in her note that it was completely off the table, that I've had members of the community think that it's still coming for fifteen, sixteen. But I don't think that's true, so maybe the Shelburne News will reprint that quote for their article from this meeting. Have you guys looked at the calendar?
Have.
Looks a lot like this year. Is it true?
Mm-hmm.
It's no different? Okay, we, do we approve this?
Yep, you take a vote.
Okay.
Make sure it doesn't line up with my ski trip, hold on.
You wanna make sure it does?
Can I, I, I just wanna throw in a reminder that, that does not include the, um, local days. So when, that's just the regional calendar for the hundred seventy-five base days, I guess they've called.
You added town meeting day this year, is that true? So now it's Monday, Tuesday.
Oh, really?
Wow.
Tuesday also.
Hopefully we won't have a school, a snow day the day before vacation again. That was fun. So, uh, I move we adopt the regional calendar?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Any discussion? You said that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. For the code of conduct, do we simply state that we've, by voting, we approve it, is that all we need to do?
That is all you need to do.
Okay, all in favor of, uh, approving the code of conduct?
Aye.
I mean, I should say.
You want a motion?
Get a motion to, uh, approve the code of conduct?
I moved that we approve the code of conduct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Now, all in favor of adopting the code of conduct for all members of the school board?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Now I move to eight three, which is the architect contract award, and that is separate from this.
It is, um.
Let's see here.
Did, did people, did board members have an opportunity to receive that information?
Architect action, there it is, okay.
Do you have me to speak to it?
Just quickly, yeah.
Okay. Um, actually, why don't I read it out, shall I, for the members of the community? So it's eight point three A, the board is asked to approve the issuance of a contract for a NTE, not to exceed, thirty thousand dollars to the firm Dor and Whittier Architects to cover supporting both the facility committee and the school board in their development of the next major facility project at the Shelburne Community School. The project's scope as bid includes support up to the point, it is admitted to voters for consideration. The facility committee recommends approval. So I think we have to do two, vote on both of these, is that correct, Molly?
Yeah.
So we would vote on this first one?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. So I would move that the board approve this thirty thousand dollars for the bid to Dor and Whittier Architects.
So I would just ask, why don't we review the two requests so that there's no confusion between the two of them and then we'll vote on them separately?
Oh, okay.
How's that?
Sure, that's just fine.
So you read the second one.
I will, uh, eight point three B, the board is asked to approve opening a construction project in the budgeted amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, which includes Dor and Whittier expense, consulted expense not included in the contract, and reimbursable expenses not included in the contract. Project will be funded using money available within the fund and a fifteen thousand dollar transfer from the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen anticipated general fund surplus. The facility committee recommends approval.
Good. So the first question, the first one is for assistance in preparing for the bond vote and basically marketing of the bond vote.
Yes.
Is the second, um, preliminary designs of what the.
No, the second, I mean, basically the, it's a fixed contract for thirty thousand with Dor and Whittier. What the thirty-five thousand is, is to, for things that may not be covered by that. So if they have to bring in a lighting consultant or they have to.
Okay.
You know, produce drawings which are reimbursable. So I think Bob's just doing that to cover, so we don't have to come back every time and say, oh, we spent a thousand dollars on drawings. So he's saying this upfront cost to get us to the bond vote is gonna be thirty, or he's, wants to earmark thirty-five thousand dollars, so we're not coming back and getting nickel and dime.
So the, it's a total of thirty-five?
Right.
Got it. All right.
But we have to approve those two separately.
Okay.
Right.
Can I get a motion to, uh, approve eight three A?
So moved?
Okay, second?
Let's discussion.
What?
Discussion, yeah.
Oh, then I think we have discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll. So any discussion?
So I guess I have some questions on where the money's coming from. So the, we're moving fifteen thousand dollars from this year's anticipated budget surplus.
So we have, um, a capital improvements fund, that's what we call it, and that currently has fifty-three thousand nine hundred six dollars in it.
How much, I'm sorry?
Fifty-three thousand nine hundred six dollars in it.
Yep.
And so we're requesting that fifteen thousand dollars be moved from that account.
Okay.
To what we call the Shelburne Capital Fund, and that Shelburne Capital Fund, I guess, is termed the construction fund. And that currently has twenty thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars in it, so with the combined, that with the fifteen thousand, so you're kinda voting on two things. You're voting to transfer that money, basically, and you're voting to, um, incur that expense of thirty thousand dollars.
But we're not spending any surplus that we might have just said we wanna spend on the playground for this construction project.
No, that's correct, you're not. Yeah, you're not, it's, it's separate monies, correct.
Patty, this says the fifteen thousand dollars would come from the anticipated general fund surplus. There's no mention of the construction fund.
So the capital improvements fund is a line item in the general budget. So there's two, I know it was confusing to me too. So there's two funds, I guess it's called. And the number, if you look on your regular, you know, general fund budget sheets here, the number is actually the fifty-three, four, ten, under operations and maintenance. So in there, there's a line item. And that line item is what I just quoted, right now it has fifty-three thousand nine hundred six dollars in it.
So it's a line item within the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of, there's that money. Now, we also have something that it's actually called the Shelburne Capital Fund, but nobody calls it that, they call it just the construction fund.
Right.
That's not part of the general budget?
Right.
That's a set aside fund?
So that's, the fifteen thousand isn't coming from that?
No. No, fifteen thousand is coming from the, right, it's going to that. So the fifteen thousand is literally coming out of the general fund. And we're going to, we're asking to transfer that into the Shelburne Capitals Fund. And that will give us literally thirty-five thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars. And thirty-five thousand thirty would go toward the Dor Whittier contract right now, and then five thousand to do.
Now, just, had we not embarked on this project, that fifty-three thousand dollars that is in that budget, was that going to be spent for repairs and maintenance? I mean, is that Dave's money to do stuff within the?
Yeah, it, it could be, I mean, it could, there's also a repairs and maintenance line, so that has money in it as well. But this would be more like, like, let's say he decided that he had to have, I don't know, something to put a piece of machinery under or something, and needed to make a little, you know, house or something like that. That's the type of thing I believe that comes out of that.
But I mean, I assume that fifty-three thousand dollars, we put that in there during the previous budget process, right?
Yep. Yep.
And perhaps like many other things, he's used it frugally and there's money left over.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I think that the... That's, that's the intent of doing this project is so that we don't have to, you know, continue to have the fifty-three thousand. Because I think it's a lot of those little things that cost money is you're having a repair that's greater than your general repairs and maintenance.
Now, not to get ahead of things, but I know we're gonna talk about asbestos abatement as well.
Yes.
Is the asbestos abatement also coming out of that fifty-three thousand dollar bucket?
Let me see if it comes out of that actual line item. It does, yeah, it does come out of that line item as well. Yep. So that would have been a better example, Tim, for me to give you.
Well, I guess just by looking at those bids, because there's such a disparity in the bids.
Yeah. That was a huge disparity.
For asbestos?
Yes.
Alright, so, do we vote separately on these, or do we do it?
So I think the first one, we vote on issuing a contract to Dor and Whittier.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve eight three A, a issuance of a contract to Dor and Whittier? So moved?
Second?
Discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, eight three A's approved. Uh, can I get a motion to approve eight three B, which would allow thirty-five thousand dollars to be used in total from various funds in the school as previously described? Get a second?
Second?
Okay, discussion? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, eight three B is approved? Good.
Thank you.
Alright. So we have eight point four, I'd just like to note, it's six-thirty and we have an executive session at six forty-five. So we have three things. We have a personnel request, the calendar, and the asbestos contract. Do we need to go into executive session for the personnel request?
Only if you delve into this, the details, but you can simply approve as well, and then you don't have to go into executive session.
So I know that...
Did we get that forwarded from Sandy, I'm not sure?
Yeah, yes.
Distributed to somewhere.
Fairly recently, though.
At the end of the day.
It came late, as I recall.
Came late today?
It was a, it was a piece of paper that was like writ, um...
There was one paragraph that was written, woman wanted to extend her leave of absence.
Correct.
Correct?
This one? That one was earlier, but this one came at the end of the day.
Oh, I didn't see that one.
That was, that's CSSU.
That's CSSU.
Oh, this is here. This is the one that came.
I did see that.
This is CSSU too? Oh, okay.
No, the, no, the other one was correct, Kathy. That, that one is the one that I was...
So hopefully you can have a quick read now.
And I know Russ had asked for a recommendation from you.
I, I recommend, I don't have the words right here, I'm taking a copy, but I recommend...
Instead of you approve the request for leave.
I, yes, I approve the request for leave.
Okay.
I recommend you approve the request for leave.
Right, and that's what we would always look for. Okay. So, I recommend we approve the leave of absence request?
You want a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. Uh, any discussion?
If they're out on FMLA, is that paid leave, or is that just, they just don't lose their seniority when they come back?
So it's paid, they have to use their sick days and personal days. And then when that's used up, it's unpaid.
Okay.
And it does also retain their seniority.
And there's no problem covering down for this position?
It's been covered.
Okay, and you can continue to cover?
Yes.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point four is the, eight point five, that was eight four, eight five's calendar. Discussion of snow days and the last day of school.
Correct.
So, currently our last day of school was scheduled for Thursday, a half day?
For Thursday, we had two snow days, Elaine is recommending that you approve. Students come Friday, but not come back on Monday.
Okay.
And let the staff, however, would stay in session through the seventeenth.
Okay.
This is the seventeenth, Monday.
Seventeenth, is it Tuesday?
Yes.
So they come back for Friday to, what, fulfill a state requirement? So we need another day, basically?
Well, basically you're making up two snow days, it's hard to waive both. So it's more favorable to get a waiver for one of those days.
Oh, okay, then we'll go get a waiver, yeah.
So, we've had three snow days?
Yes. Yeah, the one we had earlier in the year, this was the two. That moved it to Thursday, I believe, correct?
That's when we, yes, that's when Thursday, which was the...
It was originally Wednesday.
Exactly, I didn't even remember.
Our last day was originally Wednesday?
Mm-hmm, I believe so, yeah.
Should really look at that calendar more closely. Okay.
Well, I'm speaking, I mean, I don't ever really look at the calendar.
No, the last student day, yes, was the eleventh.
Eleven, the eleventh, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
That was the Wednesday, and then we moved it to the next day, and then teachers would go the following day.
Okay.
And that was fine, but now we've had two, those two more snow days. So then you would put kids in another week for just Monday, and I'm sure that Tim's children would not like that, so.
So do you think, yeah, do you think it'll be a half day on Friday, or a full day, or does it matter?
Um, I, well, um...
It wasn't discussed, actually.
Okay.
It's quite possible it would be, but I don't want to say for sure because I don't know.
So the last day of school will be Friday?
I'm trying to think, I don't think, I don't think I've ever had a, we haven't had a half day.
You know, half days?
No.
For some time because of working parents and, so my guess is that it wouldn't be, but...
I would say no, because I'm sure part two will continue to run until, you know, six o'clock at night or whatever, so.
Alright.
Although I, I don't want to say that, I just, I know that I've never experienced...
I think...
It's gonna be a rigorous academic day.
It is.
No, cleaning out, cleaning out those desks.
One movie or two. So, and then, will this affect the middle school graduation schedule at all?
No, actually, it's fine because it would stay, because I think that that's when we were gonna graduate, right?
Yeah.
Friday? I'm pretty sure, right? Or no, Thursday?
Every school has a different, so I'm not sure.
No, I think, I'm sorry, because I'm not really doing that. I, I think that they were thinking maybe Thursday night would be the graduation. And then, of course, Friday, you know, eighth graders would come.
Don't have...
Okay.
Right. I'm pretty sure of that.
Okay.
But don't quote me on that.
Alright.
Please don't.
Well, it's, you know, it's not...
But I think that that was the plan.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the extension of the calendar to Friday to cover snow days? So moved? Any second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? We've already had it, I don't know why we do this. All in favor?
I...
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. There we go. And eight six is asbestos, which we have a...
And I have a handout that came late, do you need one?
Yeah.
You probably, do you have it?
No.
You have it, yeah.
That's why I had made copies. They came from Central. Right.
I'm sorry, now I'm not here, the flow of this didn't go as, quite as, as planned, but...
Here we go.
Is this different?
Yeah, this is what we received.
Is that what you...
It is what, yeah.
Oh, you did receive that, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just gave my backside. You have an extra?
Kathy was nice enough to make copies because I didn't know whether I was supposed to or not, so.
They lay down at the direction center. I get his wife made them.
That was nice of you.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a summary of few bits delivered to us. So he said, Dave recommended Mansfield. Okay. Which was the... He totaled those up, is that the lowest one?
It certainly looks like...
That is, by a long shot.
Okay, alright. And, I don't know, have we done work with Mansfield on our previous asbestos?
I feel certain that we have.
Okay, alright.
And this is the, actually, the last phase of a multi-phase project. So this would be the last stage of that, I guess you'd say.
Alright.
Why would these be so different?
I have no clue.
I don't know, as long as they're all approved vendors.
Do they have to be bonded or something like that?
Well, they have to be trained and approved to be, have asbestos removal. They were special students and they have to dispose of it in a special way, and it's all very rigorous.
It's not totaled on the back, you have to add all, all the amounts together to get it, yes.
Oh, gotcha.
So, I trust Dave's judgment and his recommendation. So, all in favor of, can I get a motion to award the asbestos contract to Mansfield Environmental?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
I mean, I guess my question, has Dave, has he had any conversations with the architects? I mean, seems like, you know, right now, you know, we're gonna spend seventy-eight thousand dollars right before we're potentially getting into a construction.
That's right.
You know, is, I mean, I assume he wants to do it now because he has money in the budget, is that?
Well, there's money in the budget, as well as the fact that we really want it out of the building so that when you go to do any kind of a project, because you have to have a special company that removes your asbestos. You can't, that, that company couldn't do it. So I think the thought is, if we get rid of all that, because it is in multiple areas of the building, even though a small amount, then we don't have to worry about it when we go to construction, if in fact that happens.
I mean, it...
Why wouldn't we build that into the contract with, for the construction?
Well, if, if you look at the last sentence of the first paragraph, he has written, "Beyond the obvious safety concerns around the presence of any asbestos waiting until any construction project and related funding develops might potentially cause a severe slowdown to any proposed schedule." So it's as a second project.
I mean, I, I mean, I really feel like if we're close on this project, we've got architect that we have on staff, so go spend seventy-eight thousand dollars without at least running him, running it by him. I mean, there's no imminent problem with having asbestos in your building. I mean, it's when you take it out of the building is when you have a problem. So it's not a safety concern, in my opinion, right now. You know, I mean, I assume this is summer work as well, right?
Oh, no, this is April break potential work, but when there's not children in school.
But I mean, do we have to act on it tonight before?
I mean, that's at your pleasure.
We would if it's gonna do it in April vacation, actually.
The thought was to use some money from this year's fund and then continue the use of funding in our July one budget, or our fiscal fifteen, what, yeah, fifteen budget. If approved now, initial work can begin over April vacation, allowing us to significantly reduce the space conflicts with our growing summer programming schedule. So that would be the consideration.
Can you perhaps explain to me what you're talking about, having this in conjunction with the facilities project that we're talking about, how would, how would that be?
Well, I mean, I think if we're, take for instance, you know, I know we were talking about the middle school wings, you know, doing some different corners and things like that down there. And I see here, two middle school wings are gonna get some sort of abatement. So if they're gonna put walls up, I assume they're gonna come and gut out the ceiling, have it all opened up. And I just, I just think it's a easier process, once the ceiling's open and you're in the construction zone, to do it, than to have somebody come in, pop out a few ceiling tiles, take a few, you know, I don't know, I, I would at least ask the question. I'm not a contractor, but I would...
Ask the question of the architects.
I would ask Lee, and just say, hey, Lee, you know, at our next meeting, you know, we want to get this done. Does it make sense to do it now, or should we wait and do it all at once? Because again, if they're gonna take the ceiling down, let's not take it down twice.
Is Lee with Dor and Whittier?
Yes, Lee Dorn's.
Yeah, absolutely. Right.
Yeah.
So I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, they're just pulling out some ceiling tiles and then pulling the asbestos off with the pipes.
Right.
So, my thought is, why would you mobilize a whole crew that's there to do destruction and remodeling of a school, then have them wait to pull the asbestos off and then restart? That would be my concern, like, one, you know, it's not like...
Well, they're gonna bring in an abatement contractor anyway, it's not, whoever, the general contractor's gonna do it, they'll hire one of these people who bid, and I just, I mean, I'm just saying, I think it's, there's no rush to get it done. Why do we have to do it tonight? Let's ask the professionals the question before we go.
To see if there's any efficiency in doing it when you do it.
When the ceiling is already out, yeah.
Okay.
And there may not be, and then we can just do it.
Okay.
I don't think it matters whether we do it on April vacation or summer vacation.
No imminent danger to anybody.
By seeking, this is just a question, not an opinion. By seeking that information and voting on this next board meeting, does that inhibit whether or not it can happen over April vacation? It's a very snug fit there.
Probably won't happen over April vacation.
No.
And, and it can be done anytime, it doesn't have to be done over April vacation.
We'll do it next April.
Yeah, absolutely, there's no hurry.
Okay, or it would just be more difficult to do it over the summer. It would just require some rescheduling of groups.
Activities.
Activities in the summer. That's all. So, we're not gonna vote on this, we're going to...
Or are you voting not to do it?
Or can we just table it till the next meeting?
Table it?
I think that's what I was gonna say, we would table it to the next meeting.
I would say so.
Pending who is going to ask the architect, who, which of our...
Kathy and I will talk to him at the next meeting, which is...
The twenty-eighth.
Next Friday.
Okay. And can you just let us know after that?
We'll put that way in our facilities report for the next meeting.
Excellent.
Right.
Or earlier.
Yeah, well, or earlier, because if we can put an action item on the April thing, we could do something.
Okay. So do you want me to get back to you, Dave, with what we...
Yeah. That would be great.
Dave, can I ask a quick question? Are you the PTO rep?